Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the organizational meeting for the City of Lackawanna City Council for January 3rd, 2024. The caucus is what we usually start with before the general meeting, which will start immediately after. And again, this is an opportunity for the council members to entertain, ask questions, debate, discuss the various agenda items before the vote takes place at the general meeting to follow this meeting. But before we begin, I'd like to address two items for the, for the public to be aware of if they're not aware of already. One is, I must apologize to the public because we, as the city council and as the city clerk's office inadvertently didn't post notice for this January 3rd meeting within the 72 hours that is required by law. It was strictly inadvertent and a mistake, and I do apologize for any inconvenience or any misinterpretation of that. That was not intentional, and we hope to not experience this again in the future. The second is for those, especially at home, who have had a chance to look at the agenda. There are, I believe, five, at least five items that are being proposed to be added through a waiver of the rules. This was also a result of a mistake through the city clerk's office, for which, again, I apologize. When there is a, normally to have some, an item placed on the agenda, the item must be clocked in at the clerk's office by the Wednesday before the subject meeting, by Wednesday noon. If, if there's an intervening holiday, and in this instance, there was Christmas on the 25th of December, that extends the time to have the requested agenda item clocked in at the clerk's office by day. So instead of being the expiration time at, in this instance, December 27th at noon, it should have been December 28th, Thursday, at noon. And those several items were turned away even though they were clocked in, they should have been included in the general agenda. So I asked that our city clerk place those items on the agenda. They are significant in nature, but I thought they should be included. And it's up to the city council then to decide whether or not, by a vote, up or down, as to whether to waive the rules or not. And just for the council's consideration, if there's a discussion on either the posting or on the agenda items, waiver of the rules, I'm going to institute a time limitation so that we don't get distracted by individuals who might be less than sincere in their arguments and in these two mistakes that were unfortunately made. To that end, we'll consider the agenda items. Well, it was, it brought my attention that there is a request from hearings regarding hearings from citizens by John Ingram, who is running late but will hopefully attend. The remaining of those items, including departmental reports and approval of minutes, are, as well as those items, are administrative and will be considered at the general meeting. Items four through nine are communications from Mayor Ifalo, which are her executive orders for appointments and department heads. Our city attorney, who has served us exemplary beyond compare in my experience, will not be as available, and that is Rick Jude, who is here, and we will miss him sorely. And in his place is John P. Gahn, who is being appointed. The next executive officer is regarding our director of public safety, and again, another individual, John Wolfe, who served with distinction and helped this administration and this council reorganize and bring into the 21st century the various parameters existing in the police department, as well as the fire department. And he will be sorely missed. What equally competent and an individual we're welcoming and looking forward to, and who is at this table but maybe hiding out of camera range pursuant to his direction from John Wolfe, is Dino V. Morocco. And Dino, welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
The next appointment is no stranger to anyone here in Lackawanna. He has also done an exemplary job, and we admire him significantly. And that is Brian Laxo, being reappointed as Director of Parks and Recreation. We look forward to that, to him. Being appointed as a dual department head, as a public information officer and director of development is Chuck Clark, who is present. And Chuck Clark has also served the city with distinction, and we look forward to having him to work with in the future. He's made a significant difference in the communications and the attention, the positive attention that Lackawanna has been enjoying over the last four years. Chuck, thank you, and we look forward to dealing with you again also.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And next is the executive order five, appointment of Gail Nicholson as the mayor's confidential secretary. And finally, another individual who serves us with distinction is the appointment of Anthony DeSantis, who's in charge of capital projects. He won't be the commissioner of public works, but will be on special assignments, and he's up for reappointment. So we will consider those. The next communication is from me, and I'm just asking the council to consider what we've done in all the previous four years, and that is, when we take a vote, we vote by ward, for instance. Our first ward representative, Amira Mufahi, would be the first vote. Second ward would be Carl Anderson. Third ward would be Dean Moretti. Fourth ward, Mr. Sirdike. And of course, me as the final vote. We ask to consider that. Communications from division heads, department heads, city clerk, request city council act on resolutions, appointing president pro temp. Kevin Sirdike has served on the city council longer than anyone here, and has served also as president pro temp. The recommendation, at least from my point, would be that he deserves to be reappointed, and would ask to consider that. We've gotten copies of the meeting dates for 2024. Those have already been discussed, and the appointment announcement of the official newspaper of the city of Lackawanna for 2024. Those three items will be taken in succession. Moving to item number 12, from our city clerk, submits three different notifications of adult-use retail dispensary license applications as per request of the city attorney. Rick, do you want to give us some background on that since we would consider possibly a moratorium on considering these applications?
So, in order to apply for license with the state, an individual has to notify the municipality so many days in advance. So, once these come in, the council gets them just in case, so you could see what's going on, basically. Chuck and I will review those in order to make an initial determination as to whether we think they're in an area that might violate what we intend to propose as a local ordinance or a resolution to restrict them to certain areas. But it's basically to keep you informed in case you, something jumps out at you immediately and you say, hey, this shouldn't be here, there's a daycare center down the road, or a place where religious worship, or something of that nature. That's basically the purpose of it.
And that'll be within the 30 days that you're only satisfied with?
I, I think they have to give you, like, I think under the statute, it's like 90 or 120 days notice.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty.
So are we going to consider possible more?
Yes, we're still going to consider it, yes.
Okay, so your recommendation would be just receiving files?
Yes, yes.
Anyone in the council have any questions or comments on this item?
Not on this one, but I got a couple on earlier items.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Number nine, executive order number six. I was just wondering, where the funds are coming from for this job? Is this a new job? Commissioner, I mean, it says Commissioner DeSantis, Commissioner of Capital Projects on some of the requests I have here.
That's item number nine, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Executive order number six, yeah. I don't know, the controller, answer where the money's from, what's the salary?
It's, it's in the budget. It was listed in the engineering.
Okay.
There was a part-time commissioner of public works and a full-time replacement commissioner of public works. And I think this is just renaming the part-time commissioner of public works position to commissioner of capital projects.
Okay, so it's not a new, it's not a creative new job, we're just?
I think it's just changing the title.
Example.
I think it's just changing the title. I believe.
I don't know. Are you up on this?
I think what he's asking you, is there money budgeted?
Yes.
For, for not only this position, but is there money budgeted for a full-time commissioner of public works?
The rents. We had two.
So, so as of August 1st of this year, it was money budgeted for full-time commissioner of public works. That position remained unfilled because Mr. DeSantis was filling it on a part-time basis at?
No, there were two commissioner of public works listed in the budget.
Okay.
One was for the part-time position for Tony.
Okay.
And then we had budgeted a full salary for a full-time replacement.
Okay. So once this appointment is made, you're going to do a budget transfer, or you're going to, it's, it's basically, it's money that's budgeted for commissioner of public works, but the title's now called?
Commissioner of Capital Projects.
Commissioner of Capital Projects, or it's basically a clerk of the public works type position.
But I think, well, Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin is asking, is that a new title? Is that the creation of a new title?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And who has authority to do that?
I think the mayor does with council approval.
It's not civil service?
It's not civil service.
It's going to be added in the budget? I don't know.
Yeah, I remember seeing the cent of the budget for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So?
Salary will be the part-time salary?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not?
It's not adding to the budget.
Well, that wasn't my question. Don't worry about adding it.
It's still the same.
I think the question is, should there be a resolution creating the position first, and then a resolution appointing the position?
So, does it create a position? Do we create it?
Well, if it's part-time, is it, is it, as follows? Or under collective bargaining?
No, it's, it's not, it's a, it's a managerial position.
No, it's easy. Argue that.
We want to do it.
Don't want to.
We want to do it properly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And, so I guess I would recommend that there's a resolution creating a position of capital projects.
Are we eliminating the position and just changing the title of the position? No, what, what I'm saying is, Tony DeSantis served as a part-time commissioner of public works. He has indicated that he wants to retire, but wouldn't mind staying on part-time and just take special capital projects and allow the city to appoint a full-time commissioner of public works. Since he's so familiar with the procedures, the parties involved in these projects, and again, the procedures, he would be a logical choice. So, a position, I don't think is being allowed.
No, and to really make it simple, what I would do is call this a deputy commissioner of public works in charge of capital projects. This way, you've got the money budgeted, you really don't have to create a position.
Okay. So is there any need to, to table this, or can we?
No, I don't think you have to table it, but I would, I would, appointment of Anthony DeSantis as deputy commissioner of public works in charge of capital projects, is what I would call it.
Anything further on that?
Business registration.
We talked about that. Later, it didn't come up on the agenda yet, right?
I'm trying to.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll come up later on. You know, I apologize. Does anyone else have any questions on the agenda that I went through? One through six, the executive orders? Through 12?
Through 12, just the 12th one, it was, so we're only receiving and filing just for the notification purposes for individuals that are applying through the state. So we anticipate we'll be getting a lot of these, even though we're not approving business licenses, we're just, we're just approving that we received a notification.
Yeah.
Right? And there's nothing for us to act upon other than that. And it doesn't mean that if we vote on a notification that in the future, we're going to approve their business licenses.
Correct. We're not locked in.
Right, okay.
And we'll still need a recommendation as to whether or not there should be a 90-day moratorium, so.
Okay. And then, along with the requests for these notifications, it, it's just something that, I guess we would just further discuss about where these applications are coming from. A lot of them are from out of state.
Yeah, appear to be, most of them, I think.
I think all three of them are, or within the state, not in the, not, one was out of state.
One was out of state or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, lastly, just so, while we're moving forward, it is still incumbent upon the city clerk to accept these notifications and to put them on the agenda for us to just approve the notification process.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
And council member Moretti brought up a good point before the meeting, before the caucus, and that is, he visited the West Seneca site at the, at the old bank building in the Seneca Mall area, and, and apparently had a good experience with the owner, who was very informative and opened the door to any other council members who wished to visit.
His eyes looked a little glassy.
Well, he was always asking for food.
Oh, my eyes, or?
Oh, jeez.
Do you have anything you want to add on that?
No, he was, he was very receptive, and he said that any questions you might have of what he went through and what West Seneca has restrictions on, and what you need to do. And he was, he was very helpful. He said, we were all welcome to come down there and talk to him. And it's very clean and very, very organized. Very nice.
Thank you.
If there's not anything else, then, as I indicated when we, when I opened the caucus, unfortunately, there's a request for waiver of the rules requested by our controller, controller, and that is a result of a mistake through the city clerk's office. The agenda items were clocked in appropriately, they should have been put on the agenda, but they were not. And so I suggested that we put a request to waive the rules, because the items appear to be important enough to consider at this point. But it's, as again, it's up to the council to decide by vote whether or not we want to waive the rules and entertain these at this time, or move them to the next meeting. So it's, it's up to the members by vote. Anyone have any comments on the request to waive the rules? If not, then I guess we should go through these. City Controller requests approval of an ordinance to increase funds budgeted to consultant fees in the engineering department to continue work on current projects. Was there anything on that?
No, it's just that we have a lot of projects going on, so we ran out of funds a little earlier than expected.
All right. Anyone questions on city controller?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes.
Just one, we already burned through all our money, so there wasn't enough in the budget.
That is correct.
Okay. And the money's gone from the general fund?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
And this would take us to the end of our fiscal year, if it is enough?
That's my understanding. That was what the, Mr. DeSantis projected we would need through the rest of the year.
If you recall and done, if you don't, it's okay, but do you recall what the original budget?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, so this would bring us to 100K?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Not. The next is an ordinance amending 23, 24 budget, adopted June 5th, 23, to accommodate general fund transfer budget code A1440.0469, consulting fees in the amount of $50,000. Continue working on the projects, as indicated. Again, a communication from city controller requests approval ordinance for increasing funds budgeted to overtime FEMA budget line in the amount of $2,400. Funds are set aside in the contingency expenditure account to accommodate residual or unforeseen expenditures. Linda, anything on that?
No, that's just segregating overtime that we might be able to get reimbursed through FEMA for.
All right, any, any council members have any questions on that?
If I may?
Yes.
So down the road, we might get these funds back?
Yes.
We might, or we will.
It's expected that we will.
Okay.
But I guess you just never really know.
Okay.
Until you get the formal approval.
No, I appreciate all the work you put in on this, so I'm not trying to be drugged or anything, but I was just asking. Thank you.
Anyone else on that item? All right, the next communication from city controller requests approval of an ordinance to increase the funds budgeted to tree removal and tapsoil budget line in the amount of $25,000. The excess services relay, relate to residual repairs emanating out of the December storm. Claim has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. This repair, these repairs are to lawns and tree removal, so, Linda, anything further on that?
No, we had also set funds aside during the budget process in that contingent expenditure account, so we have funds in the budget, we're just transferring them to the proper budget line now.
Any council members have any questions on that?
This might be refundable also down the road?
Yes, exactly.
Have we received any funds from them yet?
We, we have received.
If I may ask?
We have received some, and we've received approvals, but we haven't received the rest of the funds.
Well, yeah, I realize that.
But yes.
We have received some?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, next item, city controller requests approval of an ordinance to transfer funds received from E and R General Construction INC. to the police department overtime budget line, and reimbursement relates to traffic assistance and control services provided by our police department. Linda, anything on that?
No, we already received the funds, and we put them into our unclassified revenue account, and Public Safety Commissioner Wolf just asked it to be moved into the police department overtime line to reimburse for those expenses.
And were those, was that overtime paid already?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, city council?
That's for like Abbott Road?
Abbott Road at Willett and Berg.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Again, the city controller requests approval of ordinance to pre-fund the fire rescue equipment budget line in the amount of $125,000, dormitory authority of the New York, state of New York grant, and fire rescue equipment 2023 DASI. Is that, that's reimbursed, all right?
It is. We have to pre-fund it and spend it, and then we submit for reimbursement.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Counsel, any, any questions on that item? Okay, moving on to business registrations. As El Salahi, EBA Amy Fashion, 615 Ridge Road, Muslim clothing for men, women, children, he had all the appropriate, all the appropriate approvals were received. Anyone have any questions on that application? Greg Kavanaugh, 123 Farm Property Holdings, Inc., 1971 Abbott Road, property rental and crypto mining, he also received all the appropriate approvals on that. Anyone have any questions on that business registration?
If I may?
Yes.
I definitely do. I was over there today, checking the building out, and there's, like, four businesses in that building, and there's the felt building next door, and I don't know if anyone knows about this Bitcoin operation, but I did some research this afternoon. I've heard about it. North Tonawana, Tonawana's having a problem with the noise, constant noise. Bitcoin mining has a very large environmental impact, it's got a big carbon footprint, it uses tons of electricity, running equipment generates a lot of heat, and there's a lot of cooling fans, high-speed fans, computer servers in there, and they get real hot, and they got to keep cooling them off. And there's pneumatic precision tools, and operating at dangerous noise levels, decibels above 115, 120. There's a lot of crushers and grinders. I don't know what kind of operation this is, but I think we got to take a step back here, there's a ton of questions that aren't answered. Granted, Arkansas state law was passed allowing this, and that overseeded local laws, and the local people were powerless against these operations, and so I don't know what's going on over there, but I think we got to look into this, obviously.
Well, thank you for taking the time.
Oh, no, I just Googled it this afternoon, I've been busy, so I would recommend that to you.
Mike, do you?
Something else you got to start looking into now.
Yeah. Chuck?
You're leaving.
Chuck, do you have anything on that?
Just for more clarity, Greg Kavanaugh's company, Buffalo Felt, owns the entire complex behind the Matthew Glab post. And the primary tenants are Buffalo Felt, which is a producer of commercial felt products and pads, a smaller business called Newsource, which is a small pick-and-pack operation, kind of like an Amazon warehouse distribution center. There was until recently a tire supplier in the building. That tire supplier is gone, and they're taking, Buffalo Felt is going to take over that space, which is about 20,000, 25,000 square feet, to bring the rest of the Buffalo Felt operation from West Seneca to Lackawanna. And then in the front of the building, directly behind the Matthew Glab, is a building that runs north and south, that's more like an office building that houses a call center, customer contact. So Buffalo Felt is the main tenant of the building, and the rest of them are all secondary businesses or renters from that. The only understanding I have of, of the crypto mining is that Mr. Kavanaugh is a, so you, you have to, you have to be able to accept digital currency for payment, and what crypto mining is, at a real basic level, is, is the processing of information to validate transactions. Every, if you use Bitcoin as an example, Bitcoin has a value, let's just say it's a dollar. Every time a Bitcoin is used to purchase something, it executes transactions. Crypto mining in part is the processing of those transactions so that merchants know what Bitcoin has been used and when it's, when it's been exhausted. And that's really the extent of my knowledge of it. As far as the things that the council member has mentioned, probably all of them and, and more need to be looked into, but that's what crypto mining is at its most basic level. And my understanding is, is that Mr. Kavanaugh more than likely accepts crypto, cryptocurrency, digital currency as part of his operation. So that's the extent of what I know.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members have any questions on this item? Again, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I walked into a few buildings, they run north-south, there was a call center in one, and another one that was, so I don't know if that would disrupt, I'm, I'm just saying.
Would you like to table it for further review?
Sure.
Is that what you request?
Table, tabling it?
Oh, yeah. I can't, I don't know what we're voting about, you know? I can't vote for it. Yeah, well, I don't know what we're voting about, you know? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then we'll take up tabled items in our old business, but, um, none are listed here. Is there anybody to bring anything up at table item or anything like that?
Yeah, I would, Mr. Council President.
Uh, all right.
Something that was tabled at the last meeting. Of course, tobacco store on South Park. I'd like to bring that off the table if I can.
Um, do you have the title of the, the?
Mousen Mohammed. Doesn't have the, uh, store name or anything. It's just that, uh.
I think most of us recall that.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven?
South Park Avenue.
What was it?
Thirty-seven, thirty, forty-seven South Park Avenue, right next to the convenience store, across from the stadium, their curve. Yeah.
Yeah.
We.
Cause they jobs?
Yeah.
Okay. And you wanna, you're asking to bring it off the table to consider?
His business registration.
Okay. Um, so it'll be two steps. One, you make a motion to take it off the table. Get to second, we move forward to an upper down vote. Anyone wanna say anything pro or con about that application? I, I know we had a discussion the last time, uh, the, the applicant put a lot of money and effort into the location. It was cart before the horse, which shouldn't be a factor here, but, uh, given the circumstances and, and the nature of this particular enterprise, it's not a vague act which we're all concerned about or some of us were concerned about. So, um, yeah, make the motion. We'll entertain that then. All right. If there's nothing else, then I'm going to ask everyone to stand following the move for January third, twenty-two. The living just to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Just, again, a couple of things. To anyone in the audience, the, the, um, the meeting is being recorded, so everybody will be on, on record here. But as I, as I spoke at the beginning of the caucus, I'll, I'll mention this for the record here too. Uh, I have to apologize for two items. One, uh, we, uh, made a mistake through the city clerk's office for filing on timely notice, posting, we required seventy-two hours notice for today's meeting. Uh, it was inadvertent. It was not by design or intent. And, um, it, it wa, it was a genuine mistake and it came at a time when the, uh, city clerk's office was, was understaffed. And it's, uh, it's all of our hope up here that, that that will be the last time we have to worry about, uh, an inadequate posting. We're going forward with the meeting anyway. And I believe the law is on our side in that regard. Rick, are, are you aware of that?
Yes, I looked at that today. Um, this has happened before, um, not in our jurisdiction, but in other jurisdictions. And the court's trying to look at two factors. One, whether it's intentional. They tend to look, you know, give you more leeway if it's unintentional. Number one. And number two, if anyone could possibly be aggrieved by an agenda item and looking at the agenda item, it's all, most of it, if not all of it, is, uh, either budget transfers or, uh, uh, executive appointments. So really, no one from the public is really aggrieved by any action that's being taken today. I did also notice in some of my review today though is, one thing I would suggest in the future, since we do start our council meetings right after the caucus, that we start advertising the caucus at six-thirty with the meeting to start immediately thereafter. As, as opposed to saying at seven o'clock, because sometimes we do start at three or four or five minutes to seven. And somebody might want to be heard on an item that's on the agenda. If they walk in at a minute to seven and we're already on item three, they could create a.
And just. And we'll, we'll make that change here now.
If I may?
Yes.
I think it's only forty-eight hours, not seven.
Well, there's, there are forty-eight hours. The statute says forty-eight hours for a special meeting, public hearing. Or something of, uh, uh, an important, uh, topic, but otherwise it's seventy-two hours. There's, there was some discussion about that having been shortened, uh, from seventy-two to another, uh, lesser number of hours. But I believe that's in the city charter, the seventy-two hours. In order to change it, I would think would require a referendum and not council.
Yeah, I think it's in the city charter at seventy-two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right. And the second item, uh, is, is the public would notice those in the audience and uh, at home, we have a, quite a few items to be entertained under, um, a request in way of the rules. That was all, also a mistake that happened during the shortage of staff in the city clerk's office. The, our city controller who's present, um, Linda Hybick, he submitted several items before today's agenda on a timely basis. It wasn't the Wednesday noon cutoff date, but because of the December twenty-fifth Christmas holiday, the Monday before the submission of, of, uh, agenda items, the expiration for submitting the agenda items was moved by a day to Thursday, December twenty-eighth at noon. Those, uh, my understanding, they were clocked in appropriately. However, they were failing to be put on the agenda, so I suggested we, we remedy that situation through a waiver of the rules. Motion will be made. It'll be voted up or down whether to entertain these items at tonight's meeting. So with that said, um, again, I apologize to the public and any members of the audience. Any council members who, who may have been, um, caught short with an inability to review these items, I do apologize. Mrs. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mublaahi, present. Anderson?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Here.
Wa?
Here.
Development and public information?
Here.
Public Works, absence?
Here. I'm sorry.
No, your public safety.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's closed.
It's closed.
Your public safety.
Where to ask?
Here.
Uh, controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we have one hearing, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, John Ingram has contacted us. Beyonce's agenda is on his way. He did make it in time to sign the request and we have the floor.
I just wanna say a few things. Well, congratulations to you. I don't know you, uh, hopefully get to work together. But I wanna say something about Juna and John Wolf. Thank you guys for what you did, for your time served. It's not easy. Sometimes hectic. I think sometimes we don't get to, you guys don't get to praise that you do for doing the work. I've worked with y'all for years. I've worked with issues that came up sometime. Being grateful was always, coaching was always professional. So I would say thank you. City, thank you. May nothing, appreciate it, but we do appreciate it. And Mr. Wolf, I was hoping he'd be here because he really made a difference. And he should be really thanked. Thanks for all the commitment. Early in the morning, I can say that. But again, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Well said, John. Thank you, John. Okay, with that, um, would you start, please, again?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Morano moves to adopt minutes of regular meeting, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three as written.
Mublaahi, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Mublaahi, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three as written. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Departmental reports, one and two?
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports, one and two.
Moretti, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one and two. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Communications from the mayor. Mayor, I follows executive orders, appointments of department heads. Executive order number one, appointment of John P. Gahn as city attorney. Order number two, appointment of Dino V. Morocco as director of safety, excuse me. Appointment of Brian Laxo as director of Parks and Recreation. Appointment of Charles Clark as director of development, marketing and public information officer. Appointment of Gail Nicholson as confidential secretary. And appointment of Anthony DeSantis in charge of capital projects.
Uh, I would request that of those executive orders, item number nine, be amended to read appointment of Anthony DeSantis, department, uh, um, deputy commissioner of public works in charge of capital of projects. And to that end, I move to receive and file executive orders one through six and close it.
Mublaahi, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Mublaahi, to receive and file executive orders one through six. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
As amended, correct?
As amended.
As amended.
Oh, as amended. I'm sorry. Communication from the council. Council president Morano requests the voting order for twenty-twenty-four remain the same as previous years. First ward would vote first, second ward, third ward, fourth ward, council president.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, third.
Motion by Morano, second by Surtai to approve request. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Communication from division and department heads. City clerk requests the council act on the following resolutions. Resolution one, council president pro temp twenty-twenty-four. Resolution number two, council meeting dates twenty-twenty-four. And resolution number three, official newspaper of the city of Lackawanna, twenty-twenty-four.
Morano moves to receive and file act on resolutions.
Mublaahi, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Mublaahi, to receive and file act on resolutions. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Resolution number one, whereas chapter three, section three point five of the city charter of the city of Lackawanna provides that the city council may elect these members, the council president pro tempore, uh, who shall serve and in the event of the council president's absence or disability and be it resolved that council member Kevin R. Surtai, council member of the fourth ward, is hereby selected and appointed to be council president pro tempore for the year twenty-twenty-four.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written. Anderson, second.
By Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt resolution as written. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Before I vote, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members for, uh, for confidence in me and support and, uh, like I say every year, hopefully we all stay healthy and I don't have to run any meetings, so. I go, I go, yes, thank you.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Resolution number two. Whereas chapter three, section three point seven of the charter of the city of Lackawanna writes for the meeting dates of the Lackawanna city council and the city council is desirous of complying with the charter of the city of Lackawanna and open meetings law of the state of New York. The city council has established the meeting dates for twenty-twenty-four as per the dates listed in the attached resolution.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Mublaahi, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Mublaahi, to adopt resolution as written. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Resolution number three. Whereas chapter three, section three point seven of the city charter of the city, uh, Lackawanna designates a newspaper having circulation within the city to serve as the official newspaper of the city. It is hereby resolved that Buffalo Business First, four sixty-five Main Street, Suite one hundred, Buffalo, New York, one four two zero three is designated as the official newspaper of the city of Lackawanna for the year twenty-twenty-four.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written. Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt resolution as written. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City clerk submits three different notifications for adult-use retail dispensary license applications as per the request of the city attorney.
Morano moves to receive and file, refer to director of development, refer to the law department for review and direction. Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Surtai, to receive and file, refer to department of development and law department for review and direction. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Request to waive the rules.
Morano moves to waive rules.
Moretti, second. Yes.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to waive the rules. Mublaahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City controller requests approval of an ordinance to increase the funds budgeted to consulting fees in the engineering department to continue the work on current projects.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Um, so this opens this again for discussion, correct?
Um, well, is there something quickly you wanna add?
Yeah, um, I'm looking at this hundred thousand dollar total, when we can hire an engineer to monitor and to facilitate multiple projects, not just capital projects. And this figure of a hundred thousand is much that will work for me. Um, considering it's only for a part of the year of fifty K, uh, projecting it to be maybe even more as, as more projects come about during the spring, summer. Um, I know our fiscal year ends midway, but, um, that's what I'm using my hope for today, so.
And, and I understand and, and I can understand your concerns and I would generally agree. Other than, in, in my opinion, even if we hired a full-time uh, individual with an engineering degree and engineering experience, I, I think that individual is still bringing in a consulting firm uh, because of their expertise. But I certainly understand your position.
Would, would the consulting fees exceed what we would normally budget? Fifty thousand, sixty thousand, up to a hundred thousand, but we're getting so much more with having an engineer onboard. That can alleviate also the capital funds, I'm sorry, the capital projects position. That would be, uh, a less expense. I, I'm just trying to be fiscal, uh, fiscally wise about the, the decision today. I know although DeSantis is doing a great job in doing, you know, monitoring and overseeing capital projects, that's another position that the engineer would be able to take on or that position would no longer be needed. So we really have to be very mindful when we're spending taxpayer money and what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And, and, and I, I, I say this with, um, with sincerity. Um, and it's not to be used as, um, anything negative towards any individual. It's just me being mindful of where we're spending money on.
And well said and well appreciated. Um, however, we did just approve him.
Oh, I understand that. Oh, absolutely.
Something to consider again.
I believe that was for a six-month stretch.
Or six months, yeah.
But, um, I just can't, I, I just, I, I can't.
Right now, we don't have a commissioner of public works right, right now.
Right, but we are.
Full-time person in that position, so. So I, I believe we do need an engineer to oversee some of these projects that are going on right now as they're.
I believe we're actively looking for one though. Right? I mean, I'm hoping. I, I can't state, state for sure.
It's been over a year and we haven't hired one yet. A commissioner.
Well, we had one, but then they resigned.
Yeah, we did for a couple of months.
Right, right, and he was great while he was here. He's another individual that I think we should, at the end, maybe we'll speak on, John.
As always. Very good. I think I made a motion to receive and file Act on Ordinance. I don't know if there was a second. I'll say.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 4-1. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinance adopted June 5th, 2023, to accommodate a general fund transfer to budget code A14400469, consulting fees in the amount of $50,000 to be able to continue working on current projects within the city.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yep.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 4-1. City comptroller requests approval of an ordinance increasing the funds budgeted to the overtime FEMA budget line in the amount of $2,400. Funds were set aside in the contingent expenditure account to accommodate residual or unforeseen expenditures.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances adopted June 5th, 2023, to accommodate a general fund transfer to add budget code A51100108 overtime FEMA in the amount of $2,400 from budget code A19001990 contingent account.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City comptroller requests approval of an ordinance to increase the funds budgeted to tree removal and topsoil budget line in the amount of $25,000. The excess services relate to residual repairs emanating out of the December storm. Claim has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances adopted June 5th, 2023, to accommodate a general fund transfer to budget code A19001990 contingent account in the amount of $25,000 to budget code A85008560, tree removal and topsoil.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City comptroller requests approval of an ordinance to transfer funds received from E&amp;R General Construction, Inc. to the police department's overtime budget line. The reimbursement relates to traffic assistance and control services provided by the police department.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances adopted June 5th, 2023, to transfer $12,312 from budget code A2770, other unclassified revenue, to budget code A31200102, police department overtime.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City comptroller requests approval of an ordinance to pre-fund the fire rescue equipment budget line in the amount of $125,000, dormitory authority of the state of New York grant in fire rescue equipment, 2023 DASNE.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinance adopted June 5th, 2023, to add budget code H20800613, fire rescue equipment, 2023 DASNE, to the capital fund, and to increase the capital fund interfund transfer budget code H00005031 by $125,000, and allocating these funds to budget code H20800613, fire rescue equipment, 2023 DASNE.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Business registrations, Man Al Salahi, DBA Amy Fashion, 615 Ridge Road. This is Muslim clothing for men, women, and children.
Maflahee? Motion to approve the business request.
Morano, second.
Motion by Maflahee, second by Morano, to approve business registration for Amy Fashion, located at 615 Ridge Road. Greg Kavanaugh, 123.
We have to board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Greg Kavanaugh, 123 Farm Property Holdings, Inc., 1971 Abbott Road, property rental, crypto mining.
On the question? Yes, Mr. Council President. I guess before I make a motion to table this, what is our, going to be our moving forward? Are we going to do the more research on this?
I think it should be referred to Law Department Director of Development, yeah?
Yeah, okay, just, I just wanted to bring it up before. And I would make a motion to table this.
Second by Moretti.
Motion by Surtik, second by Moretti, to table business registration, pending further information, and refer to Law Department and Director of Development. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
All right, any table items or old business? Councilmember Anderson, you indicated you wish to bring something forward.
Yes, the business registration for Mossam Mohammed at 3047 South Park Avenue, Smoke Shop. Do you want me to, you can move to the table? You can move to the table.
Maflahee, second, for Mossam Mohammed.
Motion by Anderson, second by Maflahee, to remove from the table Mr. Mohammed's application for business registration for South Park Smoke Shop, Inc. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
And I'd like to make a motion to re-